Pursuing to Article 9, Section 16 of the Constitution of the Federated States of Micronesia and Title III, Section 21 of the Code of the Federated States of Micronesia, and as set forth in the Official Rules of Procedure of the Congress, I hereby call the 20th Congress of the FSM Sixth Special Session to order. May we arise for a moment of silent prayer, and in doing so, may I ask that you remember our two colleagues who are in PI for medical attention? Chief Clerk Falcone.
Senator Arbitas, I mean Senator Alig, Senator Arbitas, Senator Figuerre, Senator Coleman, Floor Leader Harper, Senator Coleman, Vice Speaker Moses, Senator Ned, Senator Panuelo, Senator Perman, Senator Romlo, Senator Orusmal, Senator Wally, Speaker Semenah. Mrs. Speaker, eleven members are present.
We have called to transact business this morning. Before we continue, Item 4 is appointment of the Committee to Wait on the President. I hereby appoint Vice Speaker Moses to chair, and he will be joined by Chairman Wally, Chairman Coleman, and Chairman Figuere as members of the Committee to Wait on the President. Vice Speaker, work with the President's Office on time and place of your meeting. Next item, Chief Burke.
Mrs. Speaker, the next item is our Presidential Communications under receipt of numbers 20-341 through 20-356.
Point of privilege. Assign those, Chief Burke. Yes, for Leader Harper, state your point.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. I rise on a point of privilege to take this opportunity to once again introduce certain government officials and other dignitaries who are observing our session this morning. And if I may, Mrs. Speaker, I would like to start off to introduce our own Vice President, the Honorable Yosor P. George. Let's give him a round of applause. Mrs. Speaker, due to my poor eyesight, I cannot really see all those people on the other side of me, but I assume that certain members of the President cabinets are here, but as I said, I cannot really recognize them, so may I just ask that we give them a collective recognition by giving them a round of applause. Mrs. Speaker, we are also happy and fortunate to have members of the Diplomatic Corps who are here this morning also observing our session. And if I may not violate any protocol of the Diplomatic Corps community, I am happy to start off the introduction by introducing Ambassador, I'm sorry, His Excellency George Fraser, Ambassador from the Australian Embassy to FSM. May we give him a round of applause. Along with him, we also have His Excellency Ryoji Hori, Ambassador, Chairman, Embassy to FSM. With those two, we also have TIBD Chief of Mission of the Embassy of People's Republic of China, Madame Lee. With those, also we have TIBD Chief of Mission of the Embassy of US, Mrs. Heather Cobble. My apology if I have mispronounced any of the names, and I don't know that there are certain state officials who are also here, but maybe I would let the other members do the introduction if there are few of them here around. Thank you, Mrs. Speaker.
Thank you, for Leader Harper. Indeed, I personally join you on behalf of Congress in welcoming our own Honorable Vice President and members of our Diplomatic Corps who are also here. Thank you for joining us this morning, and all of those cabinet members and other officials who are here observing our session, especially for our citizens. We welcome all of you, but I will also give the other delegations to make their own introduction of particular individuals or people. Chairman Panuelo, you have the floor.
Speaker, thank you, and good morning to you. Good morning to all the members who are here. I also extend our best wishes to our Vice President who is here and cabinet members, all of you who are observing our session this morning. Speaker, I join the Floor Leader in giving recognition to our Vice President who is here representing the Cabinet. We thank you, Mr. Vice President, for joining the opening of the session this morning. Your Cabinet, I also join the Floor Leader in welcoming our good friends from the Diplomatic Corps and especially the new members who are here in our country. Thank you for that. Mr. Speaker, I have a list that's before me, but before I go to the list, I just want to wish everybody good morning and a fresh morning to all of you this morning. I know that we will transact business, but most of you have seen the list of those of us who have filed our petition to be candidates, and ours is a very beautiful democracy. We have adopted a democratic system that is fair and orderly. Before I move on, I wish you, especially Speaker, success in the upcoming election and every member of our community here and especially here in Congress. We say there will be opponents, but I don't want to say that. I don't think it's opponents. These individuals are good friends and citizens of the FSM, and let's wish everybody success in the upcoming election, in a fair and orderly election that we all look forward to. And I'm sure our citizens are eager and looking forward to casting their conscience in selecting the candidate that they best wish to represent our citizens throughout the nation. I also am happy to be here this morning because you all look fresh, especially the Vice Speaker, because I'm sorry, Vice Speaker, we missed a big event, but thank you for the invitation for your event that took place last month. Speaker, I will go on and introduce some individuals who are here. I will collectively introduce the Cabinet who are here, but a few people that are on the list I want to recognize is, I will start with Wensner David who is here. I believe he works with the Department of Health and Social Affairs. Let's give him a round of applause, please. Others who are here, I wish to also recognize an individual I met this morning, the former Mayor of Colonial Town, Mr. Casiano Jennifer. Let's welcome him to the chamber. And from other branches, Mr. Pelanyoma, FSM Supreme Court, let's also give him a round of applause. The list that I have will be presented to our General Clerk to be entered into the list, but Speaker, I have a couple who are here that I wish to introduce to our community, especially in this chamber. A couple from Canada who are here and good friends of mine. I would like to introduce Mr. Himan Sercil Ahmed and Mrs.'s wife, Mrs. Tupa Saleh, who's from Canada. They are in Pon Bay representing the faith, Muslim faith, the Hamatiah Muslim community, which I believe was founded way back, 1889. That's before even our nations were born and became independent. They moved to Koshai, I believe most of you know the faith or the community of Muslims that's opened in Koshai in the early 1990s and now expanded to Pon Bay in 2017. They represent the faith of the Hamatiah Muslim community, and as you know, our Constitution gives the freedom of religion, and I thank our FSM community for being so welcoming to all forms of religion, and they are the new, one of the new faiths that is in our country. So let's give them, let's welcome them and give them a round of applause, and if you meet them, they're a very nice couple. I wish that all of you can meet them to also tell them about our country. And I know that Chairman Wally has already welcomed them in Koshai because they were in Koshai before they expanded to Pon Bay. So without further ado, Mrs. Speaker, let's give this young couple, Sercil Ahmed and Tupa Saleh, a round of welcoming applause. Thank you. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you very much, Chairman Panuelo. I join you in welcoming all those who you have introduced to our session this morning, especially that young couple whom you just introduced last, and they are indeed welcome to join our community of religions in the FSM. Okay, any other?
Mr. Speaker.
Chairman Aridus.
Thank you, Speaker. I wish to introduce two friends of mine who are observing our session this morning, starting with former Mayor Kisa Oesa and Rano Roko.
Thank you, Chairman Aridus. Any other?
Mr. Speaker.
Introduction of people, I will give it to some.
Speaker, first.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Speaker. Again, I would like also to introduce some very important individuals for recognition who are also here observing our session this morning, and I would like to start off with one of my mayors of the Southern Amunias Region, Honorable Douglas Rosanak, Mayor of Tonawas Municipality. Please let's give him applause. Director of Marine Resources, Chuk State Government, Mr. Pinastero Rubin. And Enid Junior Enid, Staff Attorney of the FSM Supreme Court, Pon Bay Office. Thank you.
Speaker. Thank you, Senator Coleman. I think your constituents need some project money. It's about time you gave them some. Chairman Wally, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Very good morning to you and everyone in the gallery this morning. On behalf of Chairman Alig, Alig and I, we bring you greetings from that sleeping lady on that eastern island in the eastern Carolinas. With about 2,700 photos and some angels, we bring you greetings from that island. Mr. Speaker, I know the introduction was made to the His Excellency Vice President, but I want to reemphasize that introduction. And since there is no order Koshaians in the gallery this morning, and since it's close to election, I want to introduce Tony Otto from Koshai. He is Koshai until March 5th next year, and then we'll get rid of him. Mr. Speaker, we celebrated yesterday Veterans Day, and my greeting goes to all the veterans in the FSM, especially those who serve with me and Chief of Staff Colonel Falcone in the number one branch in the military, the few, the proud, the United States Marine Corps. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chairman Wally, for that. I'm not sure you're the best in your division, but I'll stick with you on that and Colonel Falcone. Okay, any other? If none, Mrs. Speaker. You can always come back. Chairman Figuere.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Final follow suit, first, on behalf of my Chairman, Orusmal, who is not with us this morning, I bring you greetings from the people of Yap and send the best wishes for this special session. And I also wish to introduce the Oli Yapis among the members of the Cabinet. May I introduce Secretary Andrew Yettelman for recognition? Thank you. Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman Figuere. For Leader Harper.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Again, I rise on a point of privilege to introduce a few more people from our state of Chuk, especially from a election district, Timor-Lek region. And I have here with me the list, Pichcha Cheida, Abel Elon, and Pen Enlet. May I ask that we give them a round of applause? Mr. Speaker, just for the information of this body and members of the audience, if they are not aware, Pen Enlet is the father of our Consul General at our consulate office in Portland, and I learned that the other son who was introduced by Senator Coleman, another Enlet who is now working at our Supreme Court as a law clerk, is also a son of Pen Enlet, and we are very grateful to Pen Enlet for producing those two fine and smart gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Floor Leader Harper, for pointing that information out. Some of us didn't know about it, but what is he doing here in Pon Bay? I thought you should be in Portland campaigning for me.
But I think he's doing here in Pon Bay campaigning for you.
Any other point of privilege? If none, let's proceed. Chief Burke, next item.
Yes, Mrs. Speaker, the next item is Item 6, FSM Supreme Court Communications. There are none.
Next item.
Item 7, Member Communications, also none. Item 8, Departmental Communications, we have numbers 20-74 through 20-80.
Okay, assign those, Chief Burke.
Item 9, Agency or Governmental Authority Communications, there are none. Item 10, State Communications, we have one and it's number 20-30.
Assign that, Chief Burke. Next item.
Item 11, State Supreme Court Communications, none, Mrs. Speaker. Item 12, Municipal or Town Communications, we have one and it's number 20-12.
Okay, assign that, Chief Burke. I think that's a noteworthy communication for members to look at. It's the local effort to support our friends and also citizens in the CNMI. Okay, next item.
Item 13, Mrs. Speaker, Foreign Government Communications under receipt of numbers 20-63 through 20-66.
Okay, assign those, Chief Burke. Okay, Order of the Day.
Mrs. Speaker, under the Order of the Day, Item 14, Standing Committee Reports, there are none.
Next.
Item 15, Special Committee Reports, also none. Item 16, Assignment of Measures in Communications, we have an assignment or referral sheet, number 20-90.
Okay. Chairman, members, take note. Next item.
Item 17, Unfinished Business, none, Mrs. Speaker.
Next item.
Item 18, Bill Calendar, none.
Speaker. Mr. Speaker.
Chairman Coleman.
Short recess, Mr. Speaker.
Short recess, subject to call of the Chair. We're back in session, Chief Burke, continue.
Mrs. Speaker, Item 19, Resolution Calendar, we do not have any. Item 20, Introduction of Bills and Resolutions.
If you have any bill or measure to introduce, pass them on to Chief Burke. Next item.
Item 21, Miscellaneous Communications, there are none.
Okay.
Item 22, Miscellaneous Business.
Any miscellaneous business? Chairman Panuelo, you first.
Yeah, Speaker, thank you. Under miscellaneous business, I just want to say a few words on the issue of natural disasters, and I want to, Speaker, just share a few words on Typhoon U2. I think most of you have read it on the news, the social media, about the destruction of Typhoon U2. Speaker, on the return from my official trip to Kwam and to Astoria, Oregon, with the RND Committee, I made a side trip to Saipan, and I wanted to share it, but before I do that, I thank our communities around FSM, and of course, including Congress, for the generous support that we have done earlier, and I think you all know that was for Typhoon Mangut, I believe, Mangut, and the money that's going to Saipan. Speaker, I met our, some of our FSM community and the Governor of Saipan and our honorary consul in Saipan, and our core group, there is a core group of FSM citizens that's helping in the aftermath of the typhoon, and I just want to say that I've never seen damage so bad as Saipan went through, and it's really heartbreaking to see so many homeless individuals who are in shelters out in Saipan. But I will not belabor the issue because I think we all have read about it. Some of the Pon Bayans have already gone from PUC to help with the restoring the power on the island, but a lot of our citizens, FSM citizens, are living in shelters as we speak, and I want to thank our Chairman of Ways and Means. I understand that he's sponsoring additional appropriation to help Saipan, our brothers and sisters there, with additional appropriation for Typhoon U2. What I want to share is that in the meeting with the Governor of Saipan, Speaker, even though it is prerogative to decide how the money is used, the money that we sent appropriated from Congress, he did share with me that because of what he has witnessed with our FSM citizens, he said he will set aside the money to benefit our, the victims of FSM citizens who are residing in Saipan. Maybe that would be officially communicated, but I just want to share with the generous heart of the current Governor, Governor Ralph Torres in Saipan, and to thank everyone for the donation drives that are ongoing to go to the victims of the U2 typhoon in Saipan. But the good news is that the recovery is pretty quick. Saipan is very used to the kind of strong disasters that strikes this territory. The efforts of FEMA and others, the military who are there, and the communities have been very, very strong, and our citizens are also helping out in the, in the support that we give to the victims of the typhoon. Speaker, one concern, of course, that we have is, of course, FEMA assistance, and FEMA assistance, we know that we, FSM, benefit a lot of the federal programs that we have, but somehow in the applications that our citizens fill out, applications of FEMA that are filled out in Saipan through disasters like this, there's a section where you have to sign whether you're a citizen or non-citizen, and unfortunately, our citizens fall in the category of non-citizens. I think they, they get immediate support, like supplies and more immediate type of assistance that they get, but long-term house recovery or renovation, I don't think we qualify for those, and I just hope that our two nations can work it out in the long term to get this kind of benefit to our citizens because they are legal migrants into the US territories and, under the comeback, I mean by legal, you know, immigrants, even though we're status is a non-immigrant. But in general, I just hope that the two nations can work it out because our citizens are quite many in Saipan, Kwam, and other places that are prone to this type of natural disaster. Speaker, just a general comment I want to share by being a firsthand witness in the aftermath of the typhoon, and it's the strongest I've ever seen, and we hope that all the support we can give would be forthcoming. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you very much, Chairman Panuelo, Speaker, for making that visit. There is a bill that's been introduced, 20-259, that would appropriate another $100,000 to the recovery efforts in CNMI, so I urge us to take on that bill, see how we can address it. Chairman Wally?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. There is another individual from Koshai that I wish to introduce for recognition, and her name is Sandy Albert from the, she's a Chief Clerk, FSM Supreme Court. Let's give her a round of applause. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Wally. Want to have an introduction? Any other miscellaneous business?
Speaker.
Yes, Floor Leader Harper?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I was just given a note a few seconds ago to introduce another individual who is also observing our session this morning. He is Mr. Antolin Ned from the Department of Emergency and Climate Change, so please give him a round of applause.
Any good circumstances this evening? Okay. Any other before we continue on? If none, announcement, Chairman Wally?
Thank you, Speaker. No announcement from your committee on HSA, External Affairs.
Chairman Figuere. Okay, Chairman Perman?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Good morning to you, members, Vice President and your cabinet members, the Diplomatic Corps, your committee on HSA is still in recess, still sleeping. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you. You have some nominations, appointments to work on, remember that. Okay, Chairman Panwello.
Speaker, your RND Committee doesn't have any announcement now, but will be issuing a notice of hearing on nominations and other bills that's before your committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Chairman Cooley.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. No announcement, only the invitation from the OAE in regards to the ceremony in Yad. The date is indefinite. We didn't know the postpone of the date, but all members are invited. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chairman Cooley. Work it out with OAE. What's the exact timetable for that? Okay, Vice Speaker Moses, have you worked out with?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I have consulted with the Vice President and the Committee to Wait will meet immediately after session. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. I hope you can push it off like 30 minutes because we have our internal affairs among members, and you can go up to see them. I hope they will accommodate that. Okay, Senator Ned? Thank you. Senator Coleman?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Announcement.
Okay, like I said before, Floor Leader, through his motion, we will have a short get-together, members, to plan out what to do during our short special session. Okay, in our lounge. Floor Leader Harper, any announcement in your motion?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. There is no announcements, but since I'm leaving for Chuk this afternoon, hereby make a motion that we stand in recess until tomorrow at 10:00 a.m.
Speaker. This move is seconded that Congress stand in recess until tomorrow at 10:00 in the morning. Those in favor say yes, those no. Motion carried. Congress now stands in recess until tomorrow at 10:00 in the morning.